Okay, we thank you everybody. Again, we appreciate your patience. We know this is retiring. And we are back in session with case number three. Please.
This is ID 2017-0618. This is to apply historic to the proposed Tobin Hill North Historic District. This was previously continued from the February 21st hearing. There were a total of 209 notices mailed, 86 notices to property owners in the subject area, 122 notices to property owners over 200 feet, and to the Tobin Hill Community Association. We received 14 responses in favor, 44 responses in opposition, and Tobin Hill Community Association is in favor. We also received a support letter from Beacon Hill Area Neighborhood Association, as well in support. And the applicant, which is the Office of Historic Preservation, is here to request a continuance.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. I'm Kathy Vargas. I am the Deputy Historic Preservation Officer. I'll keep reading comments. So we are requesting a continuance at this time. There's been an indication from the property owners within the boundaries that there is still some questions and that they'd like additional information. This is the second in three public hearings that are part of the designation process. Currently, I just wanted to remind everyone that the properties within the proposed boundaries are currently under interim protections, and any modification or demolition would be reviewed as if they were already designated.
You are asking for how long of a continuance?
A continuance to the June 20th meeting to give us an opportunity to schedule a follow-up meeting with community members and property owners.
Okay, thank you. I am seeing some unhappy faces. And we are going to continue with this hearing. The applicant has asked for a continuance, I think for a good reason of wanting to have more dialogue. But you are all here, you are signed up to speak, and the Commission still has the option of whatever motion we want to make. We can vote for continuance today, we can vote for approval, we can vote for denial. We can have all those motions that we sent to council. So we are going to go ahead. You are free. You're signed up. You don't have to speak today if you don't want because there's a possibility with continuance. But you are more than welcome to just go ahead and speak as planned. We will hear everything you have to say. We will have questions for staff. We will treat this as a full hearing even though the city has asked for a continuance. So first citizen, sign up please.
First one on the left is Rick Shell.
Hi there, my name is Rick Shell. I live at 430 East Mistletoe. I am a resident homeowner. And I have to express to you guys my displeasure that you have had seven different meetings of the historic process and designation. I'm a little frustrated right now, I must say. That being said, I do want to say that today you're going to hear support from longtime residents who have lived here their entire lives and have family in the neighborhood. You're going to get support from a man who grew up on Mistletoe, and he loved it so much he bought two more homes in the proposed district. He lives in Montavista now, which is also historic. And he wants to help preserve the homes here. You'll hear support from folks who own homes and are raising their families in the pending district. You'll hear support from people in the surrounding neighborhood because they see the need for us to stand together against unchecked development. You'll hear support from the Tobin Hill Community Association who recognizes the need to stand for the residents of our neighborhood. You'll hear support from people who were informed by OHP, came to public meetings, and decided for our neighborhood based on facts. You already received a lot of letters in support of this change that came directly from people within the district. And a question that I would pose to this Commission is how many of the letters of opposition were verified in the same manner that the Office of Historic Preservation verified the 51% necessary to move this process forward? It's a question that you need to ask yourselves. I can very easily go and get my friends to send in a letter that I'm opposed to something when I don't live within the district, and I may have other ideas about what's going on. One of the things that I would also like to ask is that as you hear everybody, you have to realize that we're trusting you, commissioners, to make the right decision for us. H D R C has already approved the merits of our historic designation unanimously. That's already happened. Okay? We are hoping that you do what's right. You don't listen to the negative arguments, the misinformation that has been perpetuated around, and the false petitions that have been going around. And that you listen to the people that lived in the neighborhood to move this forward and that you approve our historic designation. Thank you. Next speaker is Nikki McDaniel.
My name is Nikki McDaniel, and I would like to express my strong and enthusiastic support for the historic designation of the proposed Tobin Hill North Historic District for today. My husband and I have been resident homeowners at 401 East Mistletoe Avenue within the proposed district for more than 15 years. We have talked with our neighbors and attended multiple neighborhood meetings and two Historic and Design Review Commission hearings to learn as much as we can about what historic designation means and to offer our support. The proposed designation is supported by a diverse coalition of both resident homeowners and landlords who own rental properties and who have lived in those houses, as well as those who are new to the neighborhood and those whose families have been there for generations. We also have significant support for historic districts from local business owners who see historic districts as having special appeal and contributes to our economic vitality. A core group of supporters has led our neighborhood through an open, inclusive, and fair decision-making process, with factual information provided to everyone in both commissions. As a result, we establish a practical vision that expanded our civic awareness and commitment among our neighbors. Together, we work to take responsibility for our neighborhood. This process has produced a responsible decision to seek historic designation. Already, we've found that our pending historic designation has empowered us with a voice to uphold the integrity and character of our neighborhood when H D R C recently denied approval for a developer's second attempt to build a high-density, multifamily housing project on a single-family lot that was inappropriate for our part of the neighborhood. We were able to speak at the H D R C hearing and make our concerns known. Consequently, the developers gone back to the drawing board. We believe the proposed Tobin Hill North Historic Districts exemplifies a larger vision for our entire San Antonio community. Architecturally, our neighborhood is charming and diverse. A wide variety of homes, houses, and shops are represented. No two houses are alike. But perhaps more important is the cultural diversity represented by the people who live there. They're all ages, a mix of ethnicities and races, and come from all walks of life and have a wide variety of interests. The wonderful thing is, this part of our neighborhood has been as white since it was developed in the early 1900s. And we truly admire this fairer San Antonio. We're excited with that becoming historic, and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Carmen Hernandez. And just to tell you who's next so that we're ready. After Carmen Hernandez will be Federica Kushner.
Oh, there we go. Well, anyway, I was going to give a big old speech, but no, I just want to tell you that I am 1,000 to 100% for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Federica Kushner. And then on deck, we have Mark Spielman.
I'm Federica Kushner. I live at 405 East Mistletoe Avenue in Tobin Hill. And I am intending to give an official statement of the Tobin Hill Community Association. But first, I would love to make a few short comments. First of all, historic designation has the unqualified support of the Tobin Hill Community Association. Second, this case was approved by the H D R C. It is now in its own, not H D R C. Third, there are always going to be people who are not contained who think that Dallas is the capital of Texas. And you can't change that. And if this is rescheduled to June, it will be the third time that the community has been asked to come out and support this. It seems to me a bit much. I'll read this as quickly as I can. I believe you had it already in your papers. Members of our association have attended meetings of the residents of East Mistletoe and surrounding streets concerning historic designation. We can vouch that there has been real community involvement in the process. The northern part of Tobin Hill neighborhood is a microcosm of the historic development of much of the city of San Antonio. It was platted when there was a rock quarry in the vicinity and when the Upper Lavorosacchia was still evident enough to be used for a boundary. And by and large, the houses you see there today are the original ones, built for the workers at the quarry and the pearl brewery, as well as the managers and sponsors from the city. It has remained residential because people want to live and raise their families on streets with that look and that feel, with trees and sidewalks and neighbors nearby. It's part of the residential core of the neighborhood, contributing to its historic character and enhancing the quality of all our lives. The new comprehensive plan of the city emphasizes growth of population density in areas close to downtown. That can be a good thing. It keeps the city alive. But this part of the city is already alive. Higher density must not be accomplished at the cost of the very thing that makes San Antonio unique, its small-town feel and its own but vibrant neighborhoods close in to the center of the cities. Our historic neighborhoods are part of the signature of our city. Historic designation will give Mistletoe a layer of protection from piecemeal demolition and unwise development, while allowing it to continue to live and breathe as a contributing factor to the character of this unique city. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Good job finishing.
Mark Spielman. And on deck is Cynthia Spielman.
I'm ceding my time to Ben Fermin.
Right next is Cynthia Spielman. And on deck would be Jose Trevino.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Spielman. I'm the president of the Beacon Hill Area Neighborhood Association. On behalf of the Beacon Hill Area Neighborhood Association, I'm lighting in support of the establishment of the designation of Historic District for Tobin Hill North. Our downtown neighborhoods are experiencing unprecedented stress as we move into the future. These neighborhoods, established in the early 20th century, are unique, and once gone, they can never be replaced. San Antonio cannot be great without its great historic urban neighborhoods, and that helped define who we are. There's nothing wrong with development for density, but it must be compatible with its neighborhood. And the only way to guarantee this kind of development is through the historic district designation. Beacon Hill was told, as we faced threat of incompatible development, that our only sure recourse for protection was to seek an H D designation. So we don't understand why then Tobin Hill North is under threat of continuance and possible denial, especially when they've gone through the numerous public meetings, gathered the required majority of votes, and their application for an H D designation has been unanimously approved by H D R C. The denial of this request will have a chilling effect on all neighborhoods seeking an historic designation. Tobin Hill North has been encouraged to seek Neighborhood Conservation District designation in the place of an H D designation. There's some obvious problems with this approach. The developers understandably have stated they're unwilling to wait for the year that it takes to develop N C D standards. The N C D does not necessarily protect a neighborhood from incompatible development, as evidenced by the recent developments in Beacon Hill. And this is not what the majority of the residents want. What is at risk is not just the preservation of historic buildings and architecture, but of a community. Preserve this neighborhood and help them welcome compatible and neighborhood-friendly development. Please support the establishment of their request for historic designation for Tobin Hill North. Thank you.
Jose Trevino. On deck will be Gloria Herrera.
Okay, Mr. Trevino is not going to speak.
Gloria Herrera. On deck will be Yvonne Gonzalez.
Hello, I'm Dr. Gloria Herrera. I live on 502 East Mistletoe with my husband, Bruce Norton. And I support the designation for the Historic District for Tobin Hill North. I want to say that some of the people that oppose the designation of historic also own rental or they own homes in the area, and they rent out their homes, but they do not live in the district. I think it's been a benefit to the neighborhood for it to be a pending Historic District. In October 2016, Terra Market proposed what I thought was an inappropriate development at 421, 425 East Mistletoe Avenue. And it was brought up at the last meeting that the majority of homes have spacious front yards and backyards. And my house on East Mistletoe has quite ornate trees, a pomegranate tree.
Good afternoon. My name is Elon Gonzalez. I... I was going to read something, but I don't know how to do it. Not what she said. Some people own the property and they'll live in the property. But I have been terribly concerned with this property since I was born and came home from the hospital many, many years ago to that particular house. There are so many unique qualities about that house that it's impossible to tell you all. I brought two maps that I have along the way I have collected different things. And I'm on a map of our area. One is from 1909. Another one is from 1912. And the reason I brought them was because, in a spiritual way, that's what this neighborhood is. It is a journey of the spirit for me because I feel very attached. But it's also something that has to do with our history. San Antonio is unique. And if you allow these things to happen, people to come in, they'll knock down stuff, we're going to lose that uniqueness. And all of that income that we supposedly were going to get is going to disappear. But first of all, our soul is going to die. That's part of us. And so I ask you, please, please consider what you're... I don't know if you were able to see it or not.
They're asking him out.
It had to do... What I wanted to tell you about was that Tobin Hill was originally called the Rockaway Neighborhood. And the Rockaway Neighborhood first appeared in the late 19th century. Legend has it that the mortar used in the Alamo Nation came from this area. Many of the city's oldest limestone buildings were made from rock taken from the quarry. My family and I were said to have donated stone of San Fernando Cathedral from there. The families that worked in the quarries settled in the area on streets such as East Mistletoe and Ewok, which used to be called East Wall. Many of the oldest families still have descendants living in the old Rockaway neighborhood. Under the most inner-city neighborhoods, the grandchildren and great-grandchildren of the original families still live in the area. The legend of the old Rockaway and the strong culture that still bonds the families, bonds us all together. 30 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Vivian Rule, followed by Albert Adias. I'm sorry, followed by Andrea Gernon.
Hello, I'm Vivian Rule. I am... My husband and I live at 307 East Mistletoe. We bought that house three years ago. Moved in from Burney. And we love it. It's just a charming street. Every house different, mostly small, single-family homes. We would really like to protect the character of that neighborhood. I didn't grow up there like he did, but I grew up in a neighborhood very like that. And it feels like that. And there are people with children who are enjoying that cozy feel that a neighborhood like that has. So I ask you to protect it. Thank you.
Andrea Gernon. Followed by Albert Adias. Andrea?
Tengo vida en Mistletoe. En 1967.
Into the Mistletoe Street in 1967. Very happy in that neighborhood. Her grandchild and great-grandchildren were born there. And she hopes that the neighborhood will stay as it is. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Albert Adias, followed by Paul Starnes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Albert Adias. My family moved into Tobin Hill in 1960. I was seven years old. And I lived there, for maybe probably about 40 years, before I moved to Montavista. But I still own three rental properties in the proposed Historic District. And one thing I can say about the house is that it should be preserved. I'm in favor of historic designation. But one thing people don't realize, you can drive by there and see these homes, but you have to go inside to see what these houses look like. The woodwork, the pine floors. Some have oak floors. But there's also species of pine wood called longleaf pine. And that pine is hard to find. It's a shame if anybody would start destroying these beautiful homes in this neighborhood for any reason. And we're under great pressure, like the previous discussion at Dugoy Hill, about putting apartments behind somebody's house. You know, maybe that will help preserve a neighborhood, but they have to conform. And since I also lived, like I said, for about 40 years in Tobin Hill. And I lived in two houses in the proposed district. And I can see why these other neighbors are so passionate about getting historic. Because they want to preserve their homes because they live in them. And they want to like be able to pass them on to children, grandchildren, and what have you. But they want to have an intact neighborhood because it's under great stress. So I hope you all vote and agree with our historic designation. Thank you.
Paul Starnes, followed by Sandra Levy.
Hello, my name is Paul Starnes. I lived at 219 East Magnolia for 27 years. And before that, I lived it on East Mistletoe and rented for seven years. So I've been part of the neighborhood for 35 years. I'm here to speak in support of historic history because we've got to maintain our neighborhoods throughout the inner city before somebody destroys them. In addition to my support, I have a letter here from another resident that I would like to read. Zooming Commissioners. This is from Kathy Kitch, who is president of the Zary Marketing. She says, "Please note that I am in full support for the designation of Historic District for Tobin Hill North. I own the office building at 2520 McCullough, which houses a digital advertising agency. One of our clients, Ditten Communities, has been defining San Antonio residential communities for over 70 years. I've learned a lot from them. It's simple. If you have a quality neighborhood which has thoroughly, which was thoroughly planned and constructed, the value of your property will be retained. The added bonus, pride of ownership, creates a safer, more stable environment. Being in Historic District keeps that concept intact. Everyone that works in our building provides our clients with beautiful, well-thought-out design on a daily basis. Of course, we want that to extend beyond our working environment into our community." Again, this is from Kathy Kitch. Thank you.
Sandra Levy, followed by Lynn Swanson.
Hello, I'm Sandra Levy, and I live at 104 Ewol. And that is the little... One street that goes up and looks like it's dead-ended, but it's not. There's a loop around. We just got that street paved after a five-year beggy with the city. It finally happened a couple of years ago. And the houses on that street are a maximum, mine maybe the biggest, it's 600 square feet. I bought my house as a care down in 2007. And it was, the roof was like this instead of this. And the foundation was completely gone. So these are nonhistoric houses. These are little old houses that originally were built as shotguns in 1904 for the people who were building the quarry, building downtown, going to the quarry and getting stoned. My house has been added on to four times, and it's 600 square feet. My house has been added on to four times, and it's six hundred square feet. The historical designation is gone. It's ruined. There is no historical to hold up. My house was made as modern as possible when I re-did it so that it would hold up as a new form. I haven't seen anybody try to take down anything in the neighborhood. I've seen about six houses since I moved there that have been remodeled, and they look great. They look better than they did. But nobody is coming in to tear down the houses to put up a parking lot because the lots are not big enough. I am confused that I thought we were talking about rezoning to make multifamily, and I don't want it to be rezoned for multifamily because there's no parking. But to make it historic is going to give the historic societies some big problems because nobody there can afford to do what historical societies require of you when you want to paint your house, and you want to add on, and you want to improve. You have to do what they say, not what you might want to do. And I'm on a fixed income, as most of the people in my neighborhood are, and I'm old, as most of them are. And we don't want anybody telling us what to do with our houses. We're not going to tear it up and, you know, try to make it into something that Montevista has or what those other fancy neighborhoods are. We're not the fancy one. We're the body of the area. And we need to survey that way. Thank you.
Lynn Swanson, followed by Daniel Trevino.
Can't hear you. Hi, I'm Lynn Swanson. I'm speaking in opposition to the opposed designation as historic for this neighborhood. I'm sure many of you are very familiar with the process of this. In the fall of 2016, OHP, Office of Historic Preservation, sent out postcards to all property owners in the proposed area and asked for a vote of either for or against, for approval or against historic designation for the neighborhood. During the process, some of the properties owned by people who were known to be opposed to this designation were removed from the proposed district. And the district was reduced from about ninety-nine properties to eighty-eight properties. Then in December, a meeting was held in which OHP announced that they had a majority of the neighborhood voting in favor of this designation, and they took over jurisdiction of the neighborhood. Apparently, some at the meeting questioned the majority vote at the time, but the whole process went forward, and historic went forward with their plan to take over the neighborhood. Since the December meeting, OHP has not publicly answered any questions about the results of the vote or reinstated a sketch that had been on their website that showed all lots in the proposed area with the votes that they had received. Despite many questions about the website, sketch, and the actual votes, no information has been forthcoming. This lack of transparency and the deafening silence led some in the neighborhood to try to fill the information vacuum by doing a survey of their own. Their survey indicated that a majority of the homeowners are actually now opposed to this designation. I ask that you vote against this designation based on the fact that neighborhood support has not been demonstrated by OHP, and that in fact, the majority may feel very differently. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next person, Daniel Trevino, followed by Cynthia Pujol. To who?
David McCullough.
David McCullough. Okay. Next person is Cynthia Pujol, followed by David McCullough.
It's Christina Pujol, and I attribute my time to you, David McCullough.
Okay, David, you're next, and you have total nine minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is David McCullough. I'm a property owner within the proposed district. And I first would like to make a request that the Office of Historic Preservation withdraw its request for continuance. We ask that this be decided today, one way or the other. You're about to make a decision on an issue that is deeply divided in a once harmonious neighborhood. The proposed Historic District is full of long-term residents whose families have shaped and created what it is today. It has undergone many transitions, and for the past several years has been a hotbed of renovations and redevelopment. The majority of the properties within the proposed district have already undergone improvements which should not in the future be approved by the Historic Commission. It is these very improvements in development that have made the neighborhood we all love what it is today. It was accomplished without the interference of mandates on appearance and designed by a government entity. For those who may not be aware of the background, the application for historic was originally filed in an effort to stop the owner of the property at work linked by East Mistletoe from developing their property as they desired. They had applied to become an IDZ and to put four individual properties on each of their two lots. A petition was circulated in the neighborhood in opposition to the rezoning, but its effectiveness remained unclear. The applicant was advised by OHP that simply submitting an application for historic designation, they would stop the demolition of the property until the application had run its course, which would take up to one year. The application was filed, the process started, and OHP took over jurisdiction of what happened in the neighborhood. Unbeknownst to the applicant, the property owner had already received permission for demolition, and the buildings were removed. This commission, later, against the recommendation of its staff, denied the application for an IDZ. There are many, many concerns with the ways and method the historic processes move forward. There has been great misinformation on all sides of the issue, and to this day, few people have a complete understanding of the impact it would have. This hearing has already been delayed twice in an effort to allow more time to present all the options. We attempted to look at creating an NCD as a compromise of sorts to protect the look of our neighborhood. Our councilman organized a neighborhood meeting and attempted to do just that. But unfortunately, that meeting quickly spiraled out of control as it developed and people speaking out of turn, yelling over each other, and was infiltrated by people from outside of the neighborhood with a great personal agenda about something totally unrelated. As we all know, in order for a historic application to move forward, a fifty-one percent majority of the property owners in the proposed district must be in favor of the designation. The original application included ninety-nine properties, which had been, which would have required fifty of them to go along. By converting the opposition to the IDZ into support for historic, the process moved ahead extremely fast. It is still unclear how the votes were counted or tabulated, but we received word that a majority was reached and the process would move forward with only forty-five property owners in favor. We then learned that the map was gerrymandered. A number of people in opposition were taken out, and the property's number of properties was reduced from ninety-nine to eighty-eight. The support for historic was rapidly decreasing as people were changing their minds once they were informed. The staff and leadership at OHP knew at the time of the HPRC meeting that there was no longer fifty-one percent support. Rather than ask for the hearing to be delayed, they pushed it forward, and the HPRC board subsequently voted to recommend an addition to be created without the consent of the residents. Many of us believe that the process was conducted in a manner contrary to what is stated in the UDC, but that is something that will be sorted out by people in the know in the coming weeks and months. A number of us have been canvassing the neighborhood, speaking to our neighbors, disseminating information, and gathering signatures in opposition to this historic designation. If we revert back to the original application, which included ninety-nine properties, I believe we can document that over seventy percent of those have not given their blessing to historic designation. And as you can see on this map that's on there, all of the red ones are people who are opposed and have signed petitions that they have copies of that are opposed to it, putting the opposition at sixty-point-two percent of the current eighty-eight properties that are there. There's also reference on the list that you have of twelve additional properties who are gerrymandered out of the proposed district who are also in opposition to it. So the opposition to this is great. And so argument is this opposition, particularly on the east half of the proposed district, that the property owners there have banded together in a process of creating a new neighborhood association that would include sixty-six contiguous properties in the four-hundred-to-seven-hundred block of Mistletoe, including Ewok, Kingsport, and Valentino. The bylaws have been written. The officers selected. The application is filled out and ready for submission. As it would overlap the current voluntary association, we are prepared to seek permission from the Secretary of State's office to create a mandatory association. Ninety percent of those people in that proposed new association simply just want to be left alone and are against the historic designation. And we're going to ask, at the least, that this area be removed and mapped of the proposed historic boundaries. A close examination of the neighborhood would show homes typical to any other home you would find within inner Loop 410, which could be considered, while it could be considered an old neighborhood, there's really only one building that could be considered to have historically contributed to the neighborhood. Yes, there are many stories of personal family history here and of families that have lived there various times during the growth and development of the city. The stories are not unique overall and shouldn't be used to dictate further growth and development. When one considers the history of the city, the prominence of the leaders and the people who developed it, and what future historians will write about, I'm not aware of anyone that would be included in those panels that use on this neighborhood, nor am I aware of any structure in the proposed district, with the exception of one that bore any significance and created the neighborhood that it is today. It had been a neighborhood in disrepair that had been slowly revitalized, mostly from west to east, and only a handful of properties remain that have not been updated. The renovations that have been made have not affected the look or feel of the neighborhood that have made it what it is. Almost sixty percent of the houses have replacement windows that would no longer be approved by HPRC. Over thirty percent have entry doors that would most likely not attain approval. A majority of the properties on the east end have chain fences, which would not meet historic criteria. It would be extremely unfair to impose these new expensive standards on the few who have not made upgrades to their properties. The owner of the property at 425 East Mistletoe, the catalyst for the whole process is already obtaining approval for his project from the HPRC. The construction on the property will be in a style and manner fitting the neighborhood. This historic designation is simply not needed to retain the look and feel. There are a few other lots on the street also designated for multifamily. I'm sure you will hear from them that they have no intent or desire to develop them in a manner unbefitting to the area. All the property owners in the area, whether they have lived there for generations or relative newcomers, have all had equal opportunity to research with the development potentials for the neighborhood or has been within the current restrictions, codes, and guidelines. The applicant who had only lived in the area for a couple of years has so professed to have fallen in love with the neighborhood as it was, it is now asking you to impose new restrictions against her neighbors who created what she loved. I ask that you do not further this rift in the neighborhood, and we can allow the deep division to begin to heal. We do not want to live in such a deeply divided community. We despise the derision, name-calling, labels, and political activism surrounding this issue. The proponents for the designation are a small, albeit very vocal minority. Do not let their voices draw the quiet majority who simply want to be left alone. Please vote to deny this historic designation and send our recommendations to the City Council for further disposition of this application. And once again, I draw your attention to the map, and the great amount of opposition to this is by far the majority of the entire proposed district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Daniel, sorry, I stopped giving the Spurs rally. You get the spirit. It's a game. All right. Next, we have Ben Fairbain. Ben Fairbain, you have six minutes.
My name is Ben Fairbain. I'm a lecturer in East Magnolia Avenue in Tobin Hill. Although I am a member of the Tobin Hill Community Association and serve by the zoning headquarters, a statement to Tobin Hill Community Association has been given today by the district president. I am speaking as an individual today in support of the proposed change to create the Tobin Hill North Historic District. Case Z2017061. Most of the arguments, both pro and con, and there have been many of both, that I have heard in recent months concerning the proposed Historic District, have addressed the perceived effects the change would have on residents of the district and/or on those who would either build in the district or have other non-residential interests in the district. These are all valid and important concerns, but I would like to suggest that it is both valid and important to take a wider perspective as well. Let me explain. About forty-five years ago, when I was a new PhD experimental psychologist by training, I was teaching introductory psychology at the Mexico State University, I sought to prepare a lecture that would show students how the methods of psychological measurement might be relevant to everyday life. In order to do so, I prepared a lecture based on a book by Kevin Lynch entitled "The Image of the City." And as I'm sorry, I recommend that book strongly to all who are performing tasks such as yours as members of the zoning commission. I face now the task of compressing a fifty-minute lecture into six minutes. Lynch and his associates at Massachusetts Institute of Technology used well-established methods of experimental psychology to investigate how people, both residents and visitors, build up internal or mental images of a city. They determined the kinds of elements that city dwellers abstract from their cities while living in them. They found a fairly small number of kinds of elements. These kinds of elements include edges of cities, and I believe that San Antonio's edges are diffuse and vague as the city peers off into the surrounding territory. Roots within the city, and San Antonio has well-defined roots, especially the limited-access highways and main thoroughfares such as San Pedro, Zarzamora Street, East and West Howard Street, and others. Landmarks, San Antonio is well endowed with landmarks, including the Alamo, the Ahala Randolph Air Force Base, the Riverwalk, the Mission, the Tower of the Americas, Market Square, the Boots, and many others. And finally, for this condensed presentation, neighborhoods, such as San Antonio's downtown, King William, Alamo Heights, the Furrow, Montevista, and quite a number of others. Very briefly, Lynch used techniques such as asking residents to reveal, asking residents questions to reveal the residents' internal representation of the city. How do I get to the San Antonio, from the San Antonio Development Services Department to the airport? How will I know when I am getting close? How will I know that I am there? What will I pass on the way? Why is all of that relevant to this case? Because Lynch and his colleagues, in studying three cities in detail and many others less intensively, found that it's the number, the distinctiveness, and the richness of such elements in the images of those who know the cities that give cities their perceived character, their memorableness, and the richness of such elements in the images of those who know the cities, excuse me, their character, their memorableness, and much of their appeal. I believe that by creating the Tobin Hill North Historic District, we will add to the city a memorable, distinctive neighborhood that will make San Antonio an even more attractive and interesting place to live than it is now. A city with an additional appealing and important asset. In conclusion, we do not get such chances very often. And when they go by, it may be that they will be gone forever because once too many changes have been made in a potential historic district, it will no longer be appropriate to consider it for a historical district recognition. I therefore urge you to seize this opportunity to change the city for the better, to make it a bit more memorable, interesting, and appealing by increasing the diversity and distinctiveness of the neighborhoods in the vicinity of that.
Flasher Ethan.
Hello, my name is Clay Oakley, and I own the property at 712 East Mistletoe Avenue. I am in complete opposition to the creation of a historic district. Now I clarify, I am in favor of preserving any and all historical value, but I know that my street is not holding me. Except for the little Alamo, a property located at 629.5 East six twenty-nine and a half East Misseltoe. The entire push for a one-street historic district was done so in an effort to stop the owner of four twenty-five from demolishing two of the ugliest duplexes ever built and improving the property. I think it's a gross misuse of historical designation as a tool to stop rezoning efforts. After the application had been submitted and people actually began to give the facts about what it would really mean to go historic, opposition skyrocketed. Many of the initial supporters, that held reached the fifty-one percent, had signed because they were either not informed about all the facts or had been annoyed and pressured many, many times by the apple. After having been informed, opposition is now at more than seventy percent, and there is division in what once was a quiet, unified neighborhood. I please ask, the zoning committee do not recommend the creation of a historic district to City Council? The people of this neighborhood just want to be left alone. Thank you.
Shariis Bell, is she still here? Our next is Marilyn Corchesi. Can you state the people that have left, whether or not they specified as part of this? Shariis Bell in support, Marilyn Corchesi in support. Next is Cindy Miller.
Good afternoon, Cindy Miller. I live in Tobin Hill. I'm here to support the historical designation, and the reason that I'm supporting the historical designation is that what we're seeing throughout our neighborhoods is kind of a mining project. You know, our property values are going up. Downtown, when I bought my house, people thought I was crazy. People looked at me and said, "Oh, my gosh, you bought a house where?" And they looked like they'd throw up. And now I say where I live, and people go, "Oh, my gosh, that's so cool." And so, there's been a sea change in the downtown neighborhoods with the Riverwalk extension, with the Pearl District, with much of the desirability of our downtown neighborhoods increasing. I've heard a lot of conversation about neighborhood conservation districts. I hear a lot of people say, "We just want to have an N C D that has teeth." I've been in planning meetings with our city planner, I've been in our neighborhood meetings, and what I've found out is that N C D has no teeth. N C D does not protect us. Zoning and historic district is what protects the character of our neighborhoods. And without having historical designation, anyone from anywhere, and I might point out that some of the people who are speaking for us are not residents of San Antonio and are certainly not residents of our downtown neighborhoods, and I think that if you're coming from Houston or from the suburbs, you may not have an accurate picture of the character of the neighborhood. And so, I think that one of the ways that we can protect our neighborhood, Tobin Hill did not go historical as an entire neighborhood, like King William and like Montevista. Our neighborhood is very diverse. We are home to industrial sites like Fletcher. We're home to the huge Methodist hospital complex. We have such a diverse neighborhood that when you look at our N C D, I mean, at our neighborhood lands, our residential neighborhood in Tobin Hill is a very narrow swath of Tobin Hill. And to protect our neighborhood, it seems to me that going historical is really the only real protection that we have from urban development, which is going to be lotline to lotline, modernized, high-density. And so, I hope that you will support the historical designation, because I believe you'll see more of us coming forward in the future. Thank you.
Gabriel Arias, followed by Lydia Kelly. Oh, I'm sorry, not Lydia Kelly, followed by Susan Furman.
I give my last minute of my time.
So, next person I have is Susan Furman, followed by Kyle Ruth.
I'm sorry, I think that he just gave his time to someone who already spoke, so we need to unpack all that.
I was told, I told at the beginning, I have a statement from the neighborhood that cannot be heard today. And maybe it's at the front, set in office, but we had to handle it in order to have this statement read today.
Okay, so since you already spoke, he can either read it as a statement into the record, or he can have somebody else read it, that decided once you've run your time.
Can I read it?
My name is Kenneth Carrillo, I live at seven twenty-seven East Misseltoe Avenue, and I support the preservation of our neighborhood. I've lived here practically all my life, and always seen my neighborhood as a neat, quiet home. My parents lived in the neighborhood since the early eighteen hundreds, and I set phones on this as well as our own devices. As time has gone, my father has changed hands, and my room's been virtually the same, although the circumstances have evolved. The point is, the neighborhood looks and feels the same. Over the years, they've seen people agree there's only repairs, might cause some changes and upgrades, but then too drastic. On May sixth, twenty-seventh, a lady came to my house requesting a citation against the historic designation. She said it was just hold off on going historic and make everyone so much more understanding, and include half of the neighborhood. She said under historic guidelines, there cannot have air conditioning units facing the street, which we've all managed for me, since I lived on a cornhouse, that I would also be under the mercy of the people on historic review board for any types of cosmetic or physical changes outside of my house, and that I might have been certain items in my yard, and in my lawn, we need to be maintained to an extra degree. She also hinted that in historic guidelines, that there is nowhere that says the O H P cannot tell us what we can do to the inside of our homes, alluding to the idea that we may not be able to future what we can even to do inside either. I feel like sheer comfort. After researching for a few years of applications for rate of O H P and the guidelines, I feel that historic guidelines would be good for not only me, but my neighborhood as well. It's also helping in my quest to restore my house to its former glory.
What's your name?
Uh, regards, Kenneth Carrillo, seven twenty-seven East Misseltoe Avenue.
Next is Susan Furman, filed by Kyle Ruth.
Good afternoon, I'm Susan Furman, I'm the owner of the property at one oh seven E-Wall, and also the owner of the property at seven nineteen Misseltoe. I am opposed to the historic preservation of this neighborhood. I feel like if you're a responsible homeowner, you take care of your property, and it does not need to be made historic in order for you to preserve your home. I took the property at one oh seven E-Wall two years ago, it looked like a doghouse, and right now it is one of the cutest houses in the neighborhood. I would not have been able to do that. I had permits, electrical, plumbing, I followed all the city permits, and if it was made historic, I would not have been able to put shadowproof windows, provide by the door and in the bathroom as code, as assist that you do nowadays. And I took a house, like I said, that was a doghouse, and made it into a beautiful, small, two-bedroom house on a very tiny lot. Thank you for your time, and like I said, I oppose this historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Ruth, being followed by Richard Moore.
Hello, I'm Kyle Bruce, I live at five two five East Misseltoe. I'd just like to thank you for your time today and reiterate some of the comments that I've heard. One is, we've been told not to listen to me, but it's something that I think that does talk to me. But what I am a part of is the silent majority that opposes this office, or this is for preservation district. I do note that this is an issue that has divided the community immensely. Practically a fifty-fifty split, as David showed you, the entire east, not the entire, but a large majority of the eastern portion of the proposed historic district is utterly against this proposal and this level of designation. Take us out, we just don't want to be involved. The western portion of the street, if they'd like to be involved, by all means, take us out, if they're on the request. This is not an inclusive process, as others may believe too. That's why the city has asked for a note of continuance. It strikes me that, I'm not a member of the Tobin Hill Neighborhood Association, because Tobin Hill doesn't represent me, because that's not where I live. Historic preservation is not the only way forward. We can't forget N C Ds, or N C Ds that have to, it's something that can be bettered up, but something the city would like to discuss thoroughly, that's why the city needs continuance. Yeah, just basically, please resolve this, to get rid of this nasty nature that I found on the street.
Next, Richard Moore, followed by Michael McCool.
Richard Moore, president of the original nineteen seventy-nine Tobin Hill Neighborhood Association. I'm also a fifty-year resident architect of Tobin Hill. I was present when the historical staff fraudulently created a Tobin Hill historic. You have heard, even Pete can get coming over here trying to impress me. I feel that this time, I would recommend to this commission that you continue with the continuance, because you have been shown a plan of most of the residents of Misseltoe against this historical designation. I'm an architect, I have confronted and faced the historical board. It's a very arrogant board that dictates their own personal taste as far as architects are concerned or non-architects on this commission. I strongly, strongly recommend that this thing be continued as staff has recommended, because I would recommend that the city clerk send out a registered letter to every resident on Misseltoe, not each park, not magnolia, but residents that you are considering historical today, because I don't trust the historical staff. So therefore, I think the city clerk must send a registered letter to every resident on Misseltoe to cast their vote, be it a yes or no. I strongly recommend that this area not be designated historical, because they dictate their own personal touches to your own property, and it's my property and I can do what I want to with it. Thank you very much.
Michael McCool, followed by Alisa Shell.
Just a reminder, we have a lot of people left to speak, and we don't have time for applause.
Alisa Shell?
It's Michael McCool.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's right. Michael McCool was speaking. I'm guessing against, he signed over that column and didn't check it off.
He opposes, he is representing six twenty-nine East Misseltoe Avenue, the older property.
Okay, thank you, we got it.
All right, Alisa Shell, followed by Judy Boe.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We're passing out some of the many, many mailers and pieces of donations that we shared with neighbors in our process for gathering signatures, as well as giving information about what historic preservation will mean for our neighborhood. I'm a homeowner and resident, living at four thirty East Misseltoe Avenue, where I have three kids. We moved here in two thousand fourteen, and we're raising our family here. We're within the boundaries of the proposed historic district. We are in support of the historic designation for Tobin Hill North. The opposition is right about something. Back in September of last year, one of our properties was sold to a developer, and they proposed building six single-family homes on their two lots. At that time, it was presented as one lot. It was high-density zoning, we came before you in October and opposed this project. It was a catalyst that unified our neighborhood, we had several meetings, and actually, at their suggestion, we met with the city regarding a neighborhood conservation district, as well as historic designation, to find out what would be best for us, so that we could protect ourselves. We voted at that meeting to file for historic designation, and I filed the original application on their tab. At that time, I worked with the Office of Historic Preservation, who I contacted, and they guided me through the process of how to collect signatures, how to talk to people. We had several meetings where information was asked out in both English and Spanish. They were inclusive of everyone within the district, because the Office of Historic Preservation knew the invitations. When some of the properties on Valentino expressed that they did not want to be included, we dropped them out of the district, changing the boundaries, because we did not want to force it upon them. We've had seven meetings about historic designation. If people still have questions, and they have not attended the meetings, I cannot speak for them. We have presented factual information to everyone in English and Spanish, and we understand what this designation will mean for our neighborhood. We're excited to be empowered as residents to have a say in how our neighborhood continues to grow and develop. Tobin Hill North is situated perfectly to become a historic district. We're bordered on two sides by Montevista, the other side by River Road into the south is the already established historic portion of Tobin Hill. There's no region we should not be considered historic. Preservation is not about resisting change, it's about properly managing change. Historic designation for our neighborhood will empower the residents here to have a say in the future of Tobin Hill North. They're proud to receive the recognition of becoming historic or gift to our community. I would like to ask those in support to please stand up.
Thank you for your time. Judy Boe, followed by Jeanette Lamm.
Good afternoon. I thought I was the last speaker, but it was someone signing after me. My husband and I own the house at five ten East Misseltoe. I am truly surprised that there are not more people here speaking in opposition to this, because I know that almost one hundred percent of the people east of my home are in opposition, and five ten is sort of in the middle of the block, or maybe a little bit to the west. The only thing I want to say is that some of the people in favor of historic designation have commented that an N C D is weak. It is only weak if you make it weak. It can be very strong and block anything you want to block if you make it that way. Some neighborhoods have made theirs weak, and they have suffered for it. We don't want to make it weak if we have an N C D, but that is further discussion. What I'd like to say is that we always like to think that in America, majority rules, and we want to say that the vast majority of people on East Misseltoe are in opposition to historic designation, and I hope you can take this into consideration when you vote, and please vote today. It's been continued so many times, we've got to get this one way or the other. Thank you very much.
Jeanette Lamm? That's all that's going to speak. And Jeanette had signed it in opposition.
Okay, thank you. The city is the applicant. It was, of course, your choice not to It was, of course, your choice not to do the full presentation, asking for the continuance. I'm going to give you the rebuttal time, but just like with everybody else today, I'm holding that to a time of three minutes.
Thank you. I don't really know what else there is for us to say. There was a lot of information by the speaker, both on both sides of the position. I would say there's some misinformation, but I think that that's been kind of common throughout this process, but not unique to this process. In all zoning cases, as well as historic designations, sometimes there is misinformation floating around out there, and we hope that they will contact our office for clarification. For example, window units, we're not going to ask anybody to take out their window units. I will say that there's confusion about what's historic and, you know, high-style and what is not high-style. Montevista and King William get mentioned quite frequently. That's only two of the 27 districts that we have, and not all of the districts look like King William or Montevista. And the HRC and OHP do not make decisions or recommendations based on personal preference. We make those recommendations as professionals trained in the field, in accordance with the UDC and the designated, I'm sorry, the adopted design guidelines. We welcome any opportunity to provide information, whether it's one-on-one or out-of-community meeting, and of course, I'm here if the commissioners have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. We are going to start with questions. We'll start with Commissioner Diaz Sanchez.
Some questions for OHP and for staff. And I'm sorry. I know a lot of the people in the room are aware of the various processes, but I would like for it to be on record regarding the 51%, the changes of the delineation of the border, how that relates to your policy, and how, if that policy is being revisited, given the multiple issues over the course of, I guess, this year.
So from a historic standpoint, and what the UDC says currently, is that the property owners are asked to let us know if they are in favor or in opposition of initiating the process for designation. Currently, the UDC requires that 51% of the properties indicate that they are in support of initiating that process. There's no current effort to change that. There has been discussion, which there usually is when we're in the middle of the designation, but there is no effort at this point to amend the UDC.
So I just ask, what are the benefits of zoning something historic when a property owner is one, not aware, and two, not in support?
If a property owner is not aware, then there's probably, either they're deceased or they are in a facility or are not getting the mail. We sent out multiple notices. If you visit our website, you'll see samples of those notices that we sent out, and we send them directly to property owners. I know that sometimes things don't make it once, but we try to do multiple mailings to make sure that they do get through. And I'm sorry, what was your second question?
I'm just interested, if you don't reach them, what are the benefits of rezoning a property if the property owner has not been notified, if that is not verified? So, for instance, I understand it is OHP's policy to get 51% of the majority in order to start the process, but at what point do you reevaluate that percentage?
So we keep track of the percentage along the way. The UDC only requires that we reach that threshold to initiate the process. It doesn't direct us to stop in between, because sometimes that figure can fluctuate, because people get information and could change their position along the way. So the UDC gives us that threshold to at least begin the process and hopefully continue the conversation at these meetings or in meetings in between. The benefit to moving forward, we're talking about the designation of the historic district that impacts all of the property owners, not just them individually. And so if there are a few that are in opposition, we'd like to know what their position is, but we don't feel that that should stop the process, so that that can be revealed along the way. Perhaps they're in opposition for a number of reasons, and if there's any questions that we can answer for them to help them make an informed decision, and that's what our role is along the way in this process.
Do you currently know, we've been, as a commission, presenting with various percentages, people standing up, I know people have left, we have been sent emails visually, in groups, there have been multiple meetings, but I have to be honest, as OHP, as an applicant, it has been very unclear on how that percentage has been fluctuated. Makes it very challenging to make a determination on this case, whether or not there is a majority of support. So what is the percentage currently and how have you been affected now?
So I don't know the exact number. I do believe it's under 40% at this time, and then we'll also get with DSD staff to see what notices they receive. I don't know how many of the 40-something notices are actually the property owners within the boundary, or if they are the adjacent property owners. But the number does fluctuate, because every single day, we give you information on both sides. The UDC, the fact that the percentage changes does not change the fact that it is an eligible district, and that at one point, we did meet the threshold to begin the process, and so it can fluctuate in either direction along the way.
So is your request for a continuance to have a better understanding of that percentage? Because I understand that it fluctuates, but it's important to keep track of that fluctuation in order for us to make a determination.
We do on a daily basis. My point is, is that the percentage along the way does not affect the process, because that has already been verified in...
It started the process, but we're currently in the process.
Yes.
So while we're in the process, it is important to acknowledge that changing percentage.
Absolutely, absolutely, but it doesn't stop us, it doesn't give us the direction to stop the work if we're doing it. And so the reason for the continuance is to provide another public meeting, to reach out, maybe to the individuals who replied in the cars to development services, and make sure that they know about the public meeting, so that they can come and get their answers, answer to their questions, or to just simply let us know again how they feel.
Thank you. I have questions for staff. Can you state again, when the notices were mailed out, with the initial report at the beginning, when that was issued, the number of notices that went out, opposition and support?
So, I don't know if you sent out first, or if this is the second mail out. This is the first mail, or is this the first? Or is this the second? You know, it didn't work. So in the beginning, when the case was originally considered, it was originally considered on February 21st. So we typically send notices out at least 10 days prior to the date of the hearing. So our policy has always been about between 12 and 13 days. So with that original notice that went out, there were a total of 209 notices mailed. 86 notices were sent to property owners in the subject area, 122 notices to property owners within 200 feet. We received 14 responses in favor, 44 responses in opposition, and that includes a petition that we have received. And then, of course, we received notices from the Neighborhood Association, from Toven Hill Community Association, and Beacon Hill Area Neighborhood Association.
I'm going to go to the other commissioners to ask more questions. I have comments, but...
Okay, let's start at the end and just move down. Just for questions. For right now.
So, I have questions on some of the things that were said, so, I think I may already know the answer, but, so, things like if the shatterproof windows are those not allowed in historic districts? Their existing properties, they're not, my understanding is that they're not required to change whatever is existing, right? But if they want to make renovations, I mean, you know...
So, yes, they can make changes to glass, if there's a requirement for shatterproof glass, of course, they can change that glass. There's, in the guidelines, there's absolutely nothing in the adopted guidelines that say prohibited. There's nothing in the adopted guidelines that says you cannot. What is in the guidelines is, this is what's recommended. This is a recommended treatment. If you would like to request something that is not recommended, you can do that through the HRC, which we have an approval rating of 98% of all the applications that are certified by the commission.
Can you mind just stay up here for a while?
I think I heard you say that you start the process after you get 51% or more in favor. Does that include the property owners and the affected neighborhood?
That's the actual property owners within the boundaries.
So you have actually received 51% of the property owners in favor of the process?
Yes. Before we called, I don't have the date in front of me, before we called the original HRC meeting, we verified by phone and email, 51% in support of initiating the process.
Has the boundary has been changed since you started the process?
Yes, the boundary has been made smaller, and I'm sorry, someone else asked me that, and I'm sorry I didn't answer that question earlier. So the boundary was reduced, and that was in a conversation coordination with the applicant. It's not unusual for that boundary to change along the way, for lots of reasons. Whether it's, say, properties are being impacted by other ordinances that provide protection, or if they are just not in support of being part of the district. And it's not meant to be underhanded, it's really by nature of the process, which you want a higher percentage of people in support, so reducing the boundaries can achieve that.
If you're able to keep the same old boundary, which doesn't have the 51% in favor?
No, if we kept the original boundary wooden, although there's nothing in the UDC that says that it has to remain, you can change the boundary.
It's a real quick staff, if you, wait a minute. What are the numbers, staff, for the, you had 209 that were sent out for, did you look again?
The 209 notices mailed, 86 of those were sent to property owners in the subject area, 122 notices to property owners within 200 feet. So of those mailed out, 14 responses received in favor, 44 responses in opposition.
So do we count the 120 that are just surrounding the property area, because they're not really affected?
Well, yes, they're within, they're included in that number, because they're within 200 feet of the proposed zoning. And so we send notices out to property owners within 200 feet of the subject area, as well as the subject areas that need to be zoned.
Okay. Kind of just confused with the 51% themselves. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Diaz Sanchez, are you ready to make a motion, or do you want to have quick comments from us?
I have several comments. It's, I have several. I'm deeply disappointed in the way this process has, what has happened, it's been several months. The fact that in the presentation, the applicant, which is Office of Historic Preservation, has not presented us with an update of the percentages of support and opposition. It makes it very difficult as a commission to see people stand up, some people have to leave because they have work to go to, to not have a real, an idea of how this community feels on a consistent basis. We received maps today that aren't dated. Again, I know people are changing their mind, the more that they know. It's just become a real challenge. Obviously, there was a process where we were examining, using an NCD process. While we discussed today in our work session, that in fact, an NCD can be more restrictive in some moments. It doesn't have the front-end protection that historic does, it doesn't have that immediate protection that I know a lot of people in the community want. While, you know, historic has that protection, it is monitored by a city entity. And TD has the ability for a community to author their restrictions. And that's just a quick note. Again, Office of Historic Preservation has led this charge, and I've just been honestly a little, not a little, very disappointed with the way in which I am receiving and the commission is receiving zoning cases, and a lot of the controversy that has come up around the case has been due to lack of communication. You know, it's, I understand the frustration of everyone here, you don't want to see this continue, but obviously, the commission is struggling with how much information has been accumulated by the applicants. I just wish there had been a lot more transparency where the boundary lines were drawn and communication. Any other comments?
Do you want, you don't want to make a motion just yet? Okay. All right, so again, let's try and keep comments free, but give the commissioner some help on what we're all thinking. Cut it down here. Good? Okay. All right.
Okay, I have to agree with Commissioner Diaz Sanchez. I'm very disappointed in the OHP's presentation, lack of, or just what's been done on this case, and even a couple of others. I am in support of, I think it's a good idea in this particular area for historic designation. I feel like it would be very helpful to this street, this community, and I see the benefits of it. However, I feel like the process is, has not been a good one. I feel like there are so many people here who are not in favor of this, and this was initiated by the community, and it seems to me that the community is saying they don't want it. I wish that, you know, it presented maybe a little bit differently. I personally did not attend the various meetings, and I'm sorry that I did at this point, but I'm having a very hard time. I will not vote in favor of the continuance, and I am having a very hard time, as much as in favor I am of that historic designation for this area, I feel like I cannot support it at this point.
Commissioner McGee?
Kind of disheartened a little. So I agree with my fellow commissioners on the whole process. I think there were probably some lost opportunities that got us to this point, and it is hard to assess with the information that we have. But my heart still just truly, probably breaks a little too strong, but, to me, I see this neighborhood as a jewel, and it's with all of its character, and I think because some of the misconceptions, I heard misconception and misinformation over and over and over again, as different people came up, and I guess that's because they didn't really understand the whole picture, and so, it would just be a loss if we just left it open for developers to do whatever they want. This would just be so sad for me. And I'm living, but...
But that's not what's happening. That's not what we're voting for.
But, yeah, so anyway, but, yeah, I'll wait for the motion to see how I feel.
Commissioner McGee?
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Ross here, there seems to be a lack of communication out there at one, and on the other hand, also, I would not be able to support a continuance at this time, because I have to one, believe that it would be a good thing to help keep developers coming into the area, who wouldn't ever even like to, to help preserve that as a district. But at the same time, I feel that that area needs to have all the information necessary to help make that correct decision.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'm not going to support a continuance. I'm very surprised we've even been asked to consider a continuance today, after all those neighbors have been here, and these people have been sitting here for five hours. And I'm sorry you asked for a continuance, because we didn't get your full presentation, and I wish we had that today. I don't know where this idea came from, and Kathy, you've been working your heart...
and Kathy, you've been working your heart out the last couple of meetings for us and I really appreciate that. I really wonder why Artistic Historic Preservation Officer is not around for these really big cases. And I'm sorry, maybe she's traveling or something but this is important stuff for the city and to always have staff be just be getting hit down by everybody. I'm surprised. Obviously, like everybody else in the process has not been helpful. Aside from all that, these cases are also hard for us because it's a zoning case but it's about historic. And we're not experts on historic zoning. All we can do is listen to what people say. I was feeling comfortable with it. I support and I think Ms. Gonzalez, Yvonne Gonzalez, just spoke so beautifully about this neighborhood and I really think it should have the historic designation. But then again, our own code makes it dependent on the majority. And I'm also uncomfortable by this sort of rolling majority kind of thing. It was a majority then it's not a majority. I actually do understand what you said about, it actually makes sense to pull people out that you are gerrymandering and there is a reason for that. And that actually makes sense to me. It doesn't play well with the neighbors but I can see why you're doing that. You guys are trying to do something that people do support. So if y'all, you're trying to get to over 50%, then I feel like it's wrong for me to go with what seems to be the minority of people on this. So I'm not going to support a continuance but if the commissioner suggests either support or denial of this request, I'm going to go with her either way on that one because I am really on the tipping point on this one. I think there's a good reason for it but then I'm hearing the opposition. So we are ready for a motion.
It's a good thing I didn't join the zoning commission to be liked. This is a challenge. I've been to several community meetings. And again, Kathy has worked really hard on this most of OHP so I also, thank you. I really cannot emphasize enough how much of the dysfunction with this case is due to communication. It's just really frustrating. You know, at a certain point, I understand gerrymandering but then at what point do you take out other properties that are in support? Where does that stop? It's kind of the struggle for me because you're following all of them but not consistently. And then not communicating to property owners and then that might change history. So I understand the logic of the process in which it's actually communicated to property owners is what is problematic. I will not be making a motion for a continuance. It's tough. Given all of the conversations and contact, I'm going to make a motion for... For denial of zoning case Z2017061H.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any last comments? Remember again that any motion needs six votes to pass. The motion is for denial. Roll call voting.
Commissioner Diaz Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee? Commissioner Kinnon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Sheriff Allen?
Yes.
Oh my God.
Will you pass this denial?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for spending your day with us. We're going to take a one-minute stretch break and then we have to move on to our cases.